Get started with our business meeting. Today's date is February 18, 2025. The time is 2:00 PM. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Okay, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And JP, would you want to start us with that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda?
I would just ask that minutes 1, 4, and 6 be pulled for some minor corrections.
Okay. Any questions or comments to go with that? Okay, we'll pull that. Public comment. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ron Hartman for the record. I got a couple of questions with regards to this morning's meeting. I didn't get a chance. I don't know if the first question applies to the Sheriff's Marine Division or if it applies to the Fire Department. But out where I live on the lake, there are many homes that are only accessible by boat. There's a lot of other homes that you can't get a Ranger pickup truck down that little road to where they live. Also, when I'm out boating, you can see teenagers that'll build pit fires and stuff along the shoreline. Do we have boats that are fire boats? And if so, who has them? And how do we maintain them? Or do we need another one? Or I haven't heard anything about trying to take care of homes literally right on the water if they catch on fire. My other one is with regards to the furniture. I haven't heard anything but he asked, is one of the manufacturers American or not? Or are we just probably buying Chinese? Which I think needs to be flushed out so at least we know. The other one, where I worked at John Deere Ford and Caterpillar, the furniture was steel. We didn't have wood products. I don't know why we can't do a comparison to that. Like Steelcase is a manufacturer of steel furniture. They're in Grand Rapids, Michigan. They're American. And I think there ought to be a comparison done with a steel product. And at least know who's American.
You bring up some great points. Commissioner Duncan, did you want to just...
Only that Coeur d'Alene Fire has a fireboat.
Well, how far down the lake will they go? It's a county's problem.
Well, it's not the county's problem at all because we don't do fire service. So you'd have to contact Fire District.
Well, they brought up concerns, you know, out in the other parts of the county. But I'd just like to know who's responsible? And do we have the proper equipment we need for these homes? Literally some you can only get to and buy boat.
Yeah, and that's an issue. And that is definitely a Fire District issue.
Yeah, it'd be Fire District.
Yeah. So, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone on the line? No? Okay. Moving on, approval of the meeting minutes. I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve items 2, 3, 5, 7, and 8.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. And consent calendar?
I move that we approve items 9 through 22.
Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Okay, payables?
I move that we approve the payables for the week of February 14... I'm sorry, 10 through 14, 2025, in the amount of $955,122 with jury panel payments in the amount of $3,353.24.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. Okay. Moving on to business. Item 24, bid opening. Bid number 001000. Administration building HVAC upgrade with Building and Grounds. And we received a bid just a couple of minutes ago.
So this is from Darden Enterprises, Inc., and it is $2,120,000. Do we need any other thing or just the base bid, Jeff? Because there's an alternate 1 and 2?
Yeah, can you read the alternates and then as well as the plumber HVAC and electrical on there?
So alternate number 1 is $63,700. Alternate number 2 is $25,777. I'm sorry, you wanted the names of the contractors?
Yes, the subcontractors, plumbing, mechanical.
Plumbing is ETCO Services in Hayden. Heating is Legacy Heating and Cooling Hayden. And electrical is Fuse Electric in Hayden.
I didn't get that last one?
Fuse, F-U-S-E.
Do we want a motion to accept the bid?
Well, yes. So I move that we acknowledge the bid for the admin building HVAC upgrade to send to Building and Grounds and Legal.
So be it.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, and motion carries. Up next, item 25, financial budget landfill east cell phase E3 construction payment approval. This is with Solid Waste, and we have our Director, John Phillips.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips for the record. Solid Waste Department is requesting approval from the B.O.C.C. to spend an additional $271,357.55 over the original bid price of approximately $5.88 million to finish the landfill E3 construction project. Final project costs are approximately 4.6% over the original bid price. And this is largely due to unforeseen geological conditions that were unknown until the excavation began. Although this project is over that original bid price, this final cost did come in well under the budgeted amount. If approved, this change would bring the total cost of the landfill E3 construction project to $6,149,757.55.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the landfill east cell phase E3 construction payment.
So be it.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item 26, board approval request. This is approval sought to hire outside aviation counsel with the Sheriff's Office. And we have Lieutenant Mark Ellis here.
Darren Murphy for the record. So as part of hiring outside counsel, we, the board, must put on the record a necessity to do so. The county is considering a lease agreement for a helicopter in order to operate that helicopter. In order to do so, R. Schur has informed me that the lease agreement must conform with FAA regulations. And we simply don't have that expertise in-house to do that. So the request is for the approval to do that, to retain outside counsel to do such. The amount of which, I don't know. I don't know that the board needs to approve that today, the amount, and who's funding that outside counsel. But we do need approval to go forward, find the right attorney. We think we do have the right attorney. So that's what's on the agenda today.
Anything else to add, Lieutenant?
No, I think you just...
Okay. Are there any questions?
No, just probably a statement that if it's over $10,000, to come back to the board. So if you can get a quote before they start too much work.
I think Brandy wants me to ask for us to utilize fund balance to pay for this.
Yeah, I think it just, laying out the scope beforehand and getting an estimate from an attorney is not unreasonable. We're just talking about one lease agreement, right? I mean, what, 3, 4, 5 pages max? This should be, you know, well within their wheelhouse. It shouldn't be something that requires much in the way of research. So if you could bring that back.
What's the history of the mess around with helicopters here in Cootney County? Is that...
It's very limited. The background, I don't know, Lieutenant Ellis, if you want to talk about this. But it's been funded by donations. We have taken some funds that were actually paid to Spokane County and allocated that same amount of funds to this program. So up to this point, and you correct me if I'm wrong, this has been a net neutral for the helicopter program for the Sheriff's Office. That it has not cost taxpayers one penny more than what we've been paying, at least to Spokane. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
No more questions?
Okay. I guess we would need a motion on this.
I move that we approve hiring outside counsel, outside aviation counsel, due to the necessity of not having any in-house expertise in our Civil Division and that a statement of work and cost would be brought back before the board.
If there's going to be a motion to be made, I'm not going to be the one to do this with the helicopter stuff. But if we're going to proceed, then we need to have 3 Commissioners sitting up here for any thing that could go sideways.
What do you envision as an event that would be sideways?
I don't know if we even need helicopters. And it's just, it's another thing in the air.
Yeah.
And it's, you don't just, you're not going to just jump off of a bandwagon and run over to it. So I'd like to see some information on this stuff and what it's going to do and what's the benefit of it and so on and so forth. And the cost of the thing and that or about.
Well, I think at least we can get the ball rolling as far as getting a quote goes without committing to any funds. And then I would argue that the Sheriff's Office should spend time with you, Commissioner Eberlein, and go through this and, you know, to at least bring you up to speed and answer these questions that you have.
Do it.
So. With that said, I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, item 27, grant application number ITD supplemental application, Idaho Transportation Department, in the amount of $1,310,000 with no match requirement. And this is with the airport. And do we have Kim Stevenson on the line?
Yes, Commissioners. Good afternoon. Kim Stevenson with the airport for the record. This is a grant application. The Idaho Transportation Division of Aeronautics has informed us they have supplemental discretionary funding available to all airports in the state of Idaho and to submit applications for those funds. It's discretionary on their part. So we put together a list of projects that we felt were dearly needed. And we're looking for the approval from the board to send in the application. So it comes in three parts. Like I said, there's runway lights for 2 and 2-0 as one part, the Pappy lights for 2-2-0 and 2-4, and taxiway lighting for taxiways November, Hotel Gulf, Lima, Delta, and Foxtrot. This would update all of those lights to LED. The state has the option to award none of this or any part up to the 3 requests that we're making. And if you have any questions, just let me know.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the grant application, ITD supplemental with Idaho Transportation Department, in the amount of $1,310,000.
And no match requirement.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item 28, board approval request. Request to purchase 10 lockers for the snow groomer equipment. This is a C-budget item. It's with the airport. And Kim Stevenson again.
Kim Stevenson again for the record. We have an ITD grant left with some budget in it of $6,603.35 strictly devoted to finishes for the SRE building. The intent is to have our shop move over there. And so we opted to purchase lockers at $720 apiece, and we need 10 of them. This leaves a difference of $596.65 that we would like to cover from Fund 30. However, at this point, we do not have any C-budget available in Fund 30. So we're asking for your approval to purchase the lockers with $6,603.35 coming from Fund 50 and $596.65 coming from Fund 30 capital budget.
Questions?
I guess I just do. It's under $10,000, but it's considered a capital? Brandy, that's...
It's because it's part of a large project. So it's one invoice of many, a part of this large project.
Thank you. That's all I got.
Commissioner Eberlein, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
No? Then I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the request for the 10 locker purchase and making up the difference out of Fund 30 fund balance.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up is item 29, grant award number 24, WFM Cootney MOU, Hazard Fuel Hand Treatment Northern Timber Fire Smart Grant, in the amount of $230,000 with the Idaho Department of Lands. And it's $230,000 with an in-kind match administrative time and community outreach efforts of $23,000 with the Office of Emergency Management. And do we have Andrea Littlefield on the line?
Yes, this is Andrea Littlefield for the record. Before you is the MOU between Cootney County and Idaho Department of Lands for hazardous fuel treatment to take place in the greater Apple area. The grant total is for $230,000 and an in-kind match of $23,000 to be met through administrative time and on-the-ground community outreach in partnership with Timberlake Fire District.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we accept the grant award 24, WFM. And this is also an MOU for the Hazard Fuel Hand Treatment with Northern Timber Fire Smart Grant and $230,000 with Idaho Department of Lands. And then in-kind match is administrative time and community outreach effort of $23,000.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item 30, Amendment to Access Idaho Services Agreement, Tyler Idaho Parks and Waterways. We have Director Nick Snyder here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record for items 30 through 33. Before you is an amendment with Tyler Idaho, which is formerly Access Idaho. You might recall that, which is the vendor that processes all of the electronic card transactions for the county. And the amendment before you memorializes an adjusted fee structure between the vendor and the state. So really not the county. It's kind of a contractual housekeeping item. It does not affect our cost or our services. The vendor has asked all counties statewide to sign it. That's what's before you. I have contacted all the other county departments that utilize this service to ensure that they had an opportunity to review the amendment. Legal has also reviewed it, and it's ready for your consideration.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the amendment to...
You have a question?
Oh, sorry.
No. No, okay.
The amendment to Access Idaho Service Agreement with Tyler Idaho and our Parks and Waterways and our other entities that use them as well.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item 31, board approval request. This is a proposed request for grant of easement, lease, MOU, or similar requests. This is with Parks and Waterways, and we have Director Snyder again.
At the Board Status Meeting on January 14th, Commissioner Eberlein asked to meet with me to get him up to speed on this policy. So we had an opportunity to do so on January 16th, where we discussed the purpose of the policy. So with that said, it's back in front of you for a board consideration.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the request for grant of easement, lease, MOU, or similar requests policy to begin with Community Development. Where they start. Right. It's where they start.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up...
Nick is always right on the money, so it's...
I'm trying, sir.
But catch you someday.
You will, sir.
Next up is item 32, board approval request. This is a transfer of a 2008 GMC Canyon Pickup, asset number 4567, to Community Development and Noxious Weeds. And again, Director Snyder.
At a recent fleet management meeting, I had learned that Community Development was an immediate native vehicle. As per our strategic plan, we have a vehicle slated for replacement in fiscal year '26. However, we would like authorization to transfer that vehicle to Community Development immediately so they can continue to work and were able to function without that vehicle. So if the board would authorize us to do so, we will make that transfer effective immediately.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the transfer of the 2008 GMC Canyon Pickup, asset number 4567, to Community Development from Noxious Weeds.
Aye.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item 33, 2025 Spray Contract Amendments with, I want to say, Bucksex Spray Services LLC doing business as Panhandle Spray Service, again with Noxious Weeds and Director Snyder.
So before you is the 2025 Noxious Weed Control Spray Contract with Boosac. Took me a while to figure that out. Spray Services in the amount of $50,000. As the board might recall, the contract is necessary to control noxious weeds on county-owned properties as per Idaho code. So for $50,000, it would treat approximately 249 acres on Parks and Waterways property, airport, KCSO, and Solid Waste.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the 2025 Spray Contract Amendments. How'd you say it, Nick?
Boosac.
Boosac, Spray Service LLC, DBA Panhandle Spray Service.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item 34, Contract Sale of Daily Images with North Idaho Title Insurance. This is with our Recorder's Office, Melinda Roder.
So before you, you have the contract for us to sell our daily images to North Idaho Title Insurance. And they, we just need board approval, and it has been approved by Legal.
Thank you. Questions?
Is this something that we've, is this brand new or we've done this in the past?
No, so we currently have two other contracts with Alliance Title and Next Title that do the same thing.
Any questions? Commissioner Eberlein?
No.
Okay.
Well, I'm just wondering what's, are we moving into advertising?
Oh, I don't think so. I think this is just for them to have access to the information in a more timely fashion for their own systems, correct?
Correct. They utilize our records, so it just gives them access.
Using images from here.
Yep.
All right, well, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the contract, which is for the sale of daily images to North Idaho Title Insurance and our Recorder's Office.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up, item 35, 2024, 2025 Agreement Amendment with Transportation Services Contracts in the Area of Agency on Aging. This is with our Transit Department. And do we have Chad Engel on the line?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Chad Engel with the Transit Department for the record. This amendment to the agreement with the Area Agency on Aging provides match funds for the 5310 Ring-A-Ride Program. The Area Agency on Aging has additional funds available for transportation and will now contribute to funding part of this year's contract. The term of this amendment is effective until June 30th, 2025. Legal has reviewed and approved.
Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the 2024-25 Agreement Amendment for the Transportation Services Contract with Area Agency on Aging effective January 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2025.
Nay.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
No, you've confused me. Did you mean to not second it or vote no on this?
No, I'm seconding it.
You are seconding it. Are you voting yes or no on it?
Voting yes.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan?
Yeah, aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye, motion carries. Next up is item 36, Board Approval Request. This is for the Cootney County Public Transportation Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program. It's an update to it, and this is with Transit and Mr. Chad Engel again.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Chad Engel with the Transit Department for the record again. We are requesting approval for the updated version of our disadvantaged business enterprise program. The U.S. Department of Transportation issued a final rule to modernize and streamline the DBE program regulations, prompting necessary adjustments to our program to ensure compliance with new requirements. All agencies receiving federal transportation funds must maintain a DBE program. And this update has been reviewed and approved by Legal.
Thank you. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Cootney County Public Transportation Disadvantaged Business Enterprise Program update.
Nay.
Meaning?
No.
No, okay. You're voting no or you're refusing to...
I'm voting no.
Are you going to second?
Yes, if I have to.
Yes, you will. Well, you don't have to. Bruce can do it.
Okay.
Okay, so you're seconding. But Commissioner Eberlein is nay. Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Only because we have to do this. It doesn't cost money, and it's part of just keeping the documentation up to current. So aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 37, Board Approval Request, Historic Preservation Museum Brochure. This is with the B.O.C.C. It's an action item, and we have Courtney Peeby here.
Thank you, Commissioners, for...
Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing from us today. So, last year, we submitted a suggested grant application to the Idaho State Historic Preservation Office for this project. After hearing from the Board, we designed instead our county budget to account for this cost. This cost would pay the Museum of North Idaho, a nonprofit which houses our county records, to develop a tourism brochure. The purpose of the tourism brochure is to execute part of our historic preservation plan. Now, I've said a lot, so I just want to take a step back to where we are. Idaho Code 674604 requires the Historic Preservation Commissions for Counties to promote and conduct interpretive programs of their county history. Cootney County Ordinance 8.8302 requires our commission to promote historic resources for the inspiration, pleasure, and enrichment of Cootney County. It also requires us to promote and perpetuate sites, areas, and buildings that reflect the significant history of our county. Relying on these ordinances and statutes, we developed the Historic Preservation Plan, which we graciously approved last December. One of the goals is to promote the preservation and culture and education of Cootney County, and to create and maintain a countywide preservation network. This brochure is modeled on Governor Dirk Kent Thorne's program of what was called the State Parks Passport Program. That program, if you remember from the '90s, you received a booklet that encouraged everyone to learn about Idaho and its settlement, as well as its contributions to the nation in the settlement of the West. And people would take that booklet to the state parks for tourism reasons. This spiked our multi-billion dollar heritage tourism industry. Currently, Cootney County does not offer such a program. So, the purpose of the brochure is to highlight seven museums that are nonprofit and maintain our county history, as well as Community Park and the North Idaho College Powder Magazine. The brochure would instruct families and tourists to attend and support these small nonprofits that maintain our history, and also provide for the opportunity of small businesses to take secondary tourism dollars from those adventures. So, we've selected the Museum of North Idaho, which is doing it at half the cost that we would receive from a private contractor. We are providing the content, and Reprographics will do the printing. This does not include the printing cost, and it has been reviewed by Legal.
Thank you. Questions?
What, what are you projecting as a printing cost?
We have a current budget of $500 for our first printing. Depending on the ultimate printing cost, we'll design our 2026 budget for additional printing.
Okay.
Commissioner Eberlein, any questions? Any questions?
Nope.
This is just for Design Services, correct?
Yes.
And when you print some of these brochures, is there any way to just follow up to see if it makes a difference on the traffic counts at these different museums?
Yes, so we are part of, we call it our network, the nonprofit museums. They will each be allotted a certain number of the brochures, as well as businesses here downtown, including the Chamber of Commerce and the resort. We will have a count of how many we put out, and then they will report back to us how many people come in to get their stamp on their passport.
Okay, so you will be able to track that a little bit and see if it actually does increase the traffic amount?
Yes, and we are also doing an accompanying website. We'll be talking with you about that hopefully in a couple weeks. But there will be an accompanying website through the county here that will allow us to access the data on traffic to our website. It will be very similar to the brochure, same content.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the Historic Preservation Museum Brochure design with the Museum of North Idaho.
I concur.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Matarri?
Aye, motion carries. That concludes business. Next up is public comment. Anyone on the line, Jonathan? Okay, 234, meeting adjourned, thank you.